We're going to pass over the minutes because they weren't disseminated with the with the package. We'll revisit them next year, next year. Next meeting. Next item is review and vote to approve the warrants.
I make a motion to approve warrants for the period covering March 12, 2019 to April 3, 2019. Town payable warrants FY 2019-39 and FY 2019-40. Sewer FY 19-SE20. Payroll PR 2019-13. MLP 19. School FY 19-S15 and MLP 27.
Discussion, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Next is to sign the ban paperwork for the fire truck warrant.
This is really, all the bills, all the boards.
Do you need to make a motion?
Yeah, and if we could, what are they, can you tell us what the terms are? Yes, I can. Um, yeah, I'll be professional one last time. So it's the fire truck general obligation bond, State House note $575,000. The sale date was March 28th. The delivery date is 4/12. The due date is 6/14 of this year. There'll be, we got two bids, because it's a small band for 575,000. One was from Century Bank, 2.5%. The one that took it was East Hampton Bank for 2.24%, and we budgeted like 3%. We will pay down $115,000 on June 14th, and then town meeting is going to have the $85,000 article for the equipment. If that gets added on, then it'll be a five-year band. Otherwise, it's possible, since we're paying down this same fiscal year, it'll be a four-year band.
So the, so the public knows the $85,000 we did.
Town, yes, town meeting, it's pending town meeting vote.
Is, we're looking to put equipment in the fire truck that didn't come with it.
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
You are.
We're going to pay, this fiscal year, we're going to pay down on the ban and therefore be able to borrow again for this equipment without going through the whole process again?
Yeah, we're already borrowing the 575. Yeah, it's, when we pay down, that's what it sounds like to me, that we just can add it together, because it's still going to be under the 575, because we're paying the 115 down.
Because the 115 is going to be budgeted for the principal payment.
It already is for June.
We could just say we're taking part of the principal payment and...
That's right.
Okay.
So we're going to know at town meeting whether to do four years or five years?
Well, yeah, and, yeah, I mean, that's still, right, Leslie said five years is what she's, wants to structure it for, because she has that 115. Well, that's if the 85,000, so I'm not positive if it's going to be four or five, but it's definitely going to be five years if the 85,000 gets added on. Otherwise, we will have to...
Probably be a five-year note.
Well, it's...
And paid off in four if the 85...
Well, it's every year gets, the band gets...
That's right.
So...
You have to redo the band each year.
Renew it.
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever the principal is, that's the amount.
Um, the inter, yeah, well, that's where the town accountant comes in separating it and figuring out how much we can afford to pay down where it comes from and all that.
Ban, I think you only, you don't have to pay any principal. With the ban, I think you can just pay interest.
Right.
And you can do up to five years, and then after five years, you have to bond it.
But...
We don't, we don't want to do that.
No, we're not bonding it, it's going to be gone.
Right, right, but we, you know, the principal amount, we can make it for as long as we want, up to five years.
Right, but our past practice is always to pay down to owe less interest. The interest rate was great, it's not much interest, comes out of my budget, because it's short-term band.
Okay. And, and just to make it clear, the 85 has not been voted upon...
No, has not been voted on.
Until we go to town meeting, which is the equipment...
Yes.
To add on, because when we did that at last town meeting, it was not included.
Exactly, so if it gets, if it passes, then it'll be an additional, and if it doesn't, well, then you've already paid 115,000 on the 575.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I make a motion to approve the band?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. All right, can't do the public hearings yet. Request for transfer of license issued to Shannon's Pizza.
Welcome, take a seat.
Introduce yourself, tell us what you're looking to do.
Yes, I want to be by the store, I like stay here on this town. I'm working maybe for two years ago, but I like to stay here, maybe I go work in South Bridge, I'm like some store over there, and maybe Spencer and Dudley too, but I come to back here, I'm like maybe some store around here, I like to be.
You don't have anything to do.
You're going to miss me. So are you looking to purchase the building, or just the business?
Just, just a business.
Okay, and you've worked there before?
Yes.
So why West Boylston, what attracts you to West Boylston?
I like to work, stay here with some people here around here.
Okay, and the business was up for sale, or did you...
No, it's, it's already called me, I'm work with owner over there, and he called me, he want to be sell the store, he called me.
Okay.
I go with him, we talk in, we be buy.
Okay, and do you have any plans to change anything within the business?
No, I'm stay for right now, I keep everything is the same thing, presenting business, everything.
The hours, everything?
Sorry?
The hours?
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 You open?
No, yeah, yeah, it's maybe tomorrow.
Same as it is now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And do you live in the area?
No, I'm living in South Bridge for right now.
Well, that's quite a hall.
Yeah, I would be look for any apartment, I want here.
Okay.
For next month, maybe.
Are you waiting for this?
Okay, just to see how it goes, or...
No, just I'm look already around here for any apartment.
Okay.
Just I'm leave only me, I don't have any family around here.
Okay, all right.
There was something about the inspection happening, there was no health inspection, no issues were anticipated, did that happen on Monday?
It, I didn't hear that it didn't happen, and if it didn't happen, then I would have heard. And we don't issue anything until the building inspector says everything's good to go.
I think somebody call him, it's last week, but he's already go for inspection, he give me certificate yesterday.
He gave you the certificate?
Yeah, yeah, maybe.
Great.
I think so, in Monday, yeah, it's Monday, he give me certificate Monday.
Then you're good to go.
Yeah, it's inspection, and two guys come, somebody from a building here and another body from fire.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the license.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Good board.
Good luck, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is the acknowledge a list of capital items from the CIB. So, I have a list in front of us, do you have any further detail besides what's on this list?
You wanted to see everything that was submitted to the CIB?
No, this is the stuff that there, that there's one, two, three, four, five.
Right, when the board had their meeting and they changed the calendar, they said they wanted to see everything that was submitted. This was everything that was submitted to the CIB, and now the CIB is reviewing everything, and they're going to come back with their report, so the next meeting is when I tell you...
Okay.
What they're actually going to fund.
So what's on our list is for the DPW, parking lot paving for $130,000. Library roof replacement of $105,000. A library computer package of $23,000, but it says that it may not be eligible, as it's piecing together smaller packages to rationalize being over $20,000. Library HVAC rebuild for $38,000. A chimney repointing at the library, which is below the $20,000 threshold for the CIB. Gear for new fire truck, 83,019, we were just discussing. Forestry utility truck for 87,5, also for the fire department, and a police cruiser, but that's not part of the CIB, it's built into the police budget. So, and on these, that's just what the CIB is looking at, we don't know what they're going to recommend for approval, that's just what's on the, on the agenda for them for, between now and town meeting. Any questions on that?
So they won't make any recommendations till when?
We'll have their recommendations for the next meeting.
Okay.
Maybe.
No, we...
I was on that board.
No, you, you...
They, they said they're going to have it?
No, and we've, I've always said that.
I know, I know.
It's no sense getting it to us the day before town meeting.
I am with you, with you.
Okay, I actually have them now, but it's not scheduled to go to you now.
Okay.
Oh, look at that.
Look at that.
They were right on schedule with everything they gave us this year.
Anybody else have anything on that agenda item? Okay, moving on. Consider the annual request from the West Boylston PTA for transient vendor and common particular licenses for their June 14, 2019 Major Edwards End of the School Year Event. Jerry's Tasty Freeze is the only vendor not currently licensed in the town. Do you have any further information on that besides the...
The police chief has, it went through him, he's, he's all organized for the day. It's an annual event, and I guess it runs like clockwork. In years past, they used to supply the food, and now they have too many families that come out, and they can't supply the food, so that's why they use the food vendor trucks.
And in the agenda...
Any motion?
Well, it's the same, same vendors they had last year and Jerry's Tasty Freeze. So we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The only question I have is Jerry's Tasty Freeze, they'll have to do the proper paperwork, Nancy, in order to get on this.
This is what we're doing, is we, they go through the Board of Health and they get all their licenses, but what we've done is, in order for, to waive the fees, the PTA asked for the permit...
Okay.
Because it's for new vendors to come in, for us to charge them. The first time we looked at this, they said it wasn't worth their while then.
Right.
So what we did is, we said if the PTA applies for the permit, we can grant you as a nonprofit, and we waived the fee.
Okay.
So that's what we did.
Okay.
But they, they'll go through all their inspections with the Board of Health and do all their paperwork, and get that all in order.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the vendors are the Dogfather, Jerry's Tasty Freeze, and Travelin' Bones. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Consider approving the hiring of James Novia to the position of custodian for the new senior center effective April 22, 2019, a grade one, step one, 12:21 an hour for nine hours a week.
So moved.
I do have a question. Nancy?
Uh, I do know that there is one custodian at the, currently at the senior center, right?
Correct.
Will he be working for?
Yes, what they're doing is, they're going to do, the gentleman that they've had for the past few years is a retired gentleman, and I believe he works, she's not here, I think he works maybe eight, maybe...
So he will be continuing to work whatever hours he's doing?
Yes, this gentleman is going to work Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and the other gentleman is going to work the other three days. They really wanted to keep him, they asked if they could do a job sharing, I said as long as you have a set schedule for everybody, and they worked it out, and this is what they want.
Thank you.
Still need a second on that?
Oh, second.
Any further discussion?
I do have a question. Nancy, was this job posted?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because I didn't see it like on the website or anything, so it's been posted.
Yes, we post to do five days in-house, and then we do it outside.
Okay, and they did interviews, and this is...
Yes, she had, I believe she had seven applicants, they interviewed four people.
Okay, and this is who she's recommending?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. All right, public hearing, application of JAG Business LLC, DBA WB Street Grill, 175 West Boylston Street for an all-alcohol beverage pouring license. Raj?
Notice is hereby given that the, that the Board of Selectment of the Town of West Boylston will hold a public hearing on the application for an all-alcoholic beverage pouring license for JAG Business LLC, DBA WB Street Grill, 175 West Boylston Street. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April 3, 2019, at 7:15 PM in the Selectment's Meeting Room, number 210 of the Town Hall, 140 Oster Street, West Boylston. All interested persons, groups, and agencies are invited to attend.
Okay, I want you to introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Anna Snow, this is my husband, Chris Snow. We are from Spencer, Massachusetts, and we're interested in opening up a restaurant in West Boylston. Currently, we're operating Black and White in Spencer, we've been open there for about eight years now, and I figured it's time to open another one. We'll be operating seven days a week, lunch and dinner. We also applied for an entertainment license, so there's a possibility of having maybe late-night entertainment, just as, you know, as the clientele, either they'll want it or not, so we'll see there. It'll be mostly like family dining, date night, catching up. We're going to take some of our, you know, menu items from, from our other restaurant and transition them over here, focusing on quality food, pairing them with craft cocktails, craft beers. We are going to have wines on tap, which is something that we don't have over there, so that's kind of exciting for us to, to do here. We're just looking to expand our, our menu portfolio. We thought West Boylston would be a great place, I mean, it's kind of similar to where we are now, demographics, you know, it's, it's a little bit smaller, but there's a lot of traffic, and it seems like a good business move anyways, and a good community. I mean, it seems, just working with the townspeople, everybody's been pretty, pretty easy to work with, so, and that's that.
Any questions from the board?
You are going to miss me, remember that. So what would attract you to West Boylston?
Um, well, we didn't want to go too far from where we were, so we kind of were looking around the area, and like I said, the demographics seemed pretty similar. The only difference, like I said, was the town's a little bit smaller, but it still has that high-traffic area.
Are you going to be running both places?
Uh, yeah, you know, we have, we've pretty much set our standards at the other place, you know, it's kind of, we've hired the right help and managers and whatnot there, so...
Okay.
It'll be mostly, mostly me.
And you said seven days a week?
Yeah.
Do you have any idea of hours yet?
Um, so probably 11, so lunch will start at 11, and then, I don't want to go way past, because I've got a little child I need to be home, home to, but, you know, if, like I said, we did apply for the entertainment license as well, so maybe one, one night a week or two nights a week, we'll be there a little bit later than, than normal.
And you said you've been running the other restaurant like eight years?
Yeah.
Was that your first attempt at running a business?
That was our first, I, I grew up in the mom-and-pop pizza shop, so, and then made the, oops, made the jump to restaurant, sorry, talk with my hand.
It's okay. So were you involved in the redesign and the changes within, that's happened, within the building?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was pretty similar to, to here, we, we bought that business foreclosure, the property foreclosure, guided it, renovated it, put all new equipment in, kind of started from scratch.
Oh, here? No, the one in West Boylston.
Oh, in West Boylston, oh, yeah, so, yeah, we're, we're...
So you're renting the facility?
We're renting the facility, but we're involved in the same, designing it, and putting all the equipment and whatnot in there.
When do you hope to open the doors?
Ideally, probably the end of June.
So, you're not too sure, huh?
No, it's kind of like a long still.
Optimist person.
It was the front, I don't know, have you guys been in there, popped in at all?
I've looked in.
Not since it's closed.
You get a chance to stop during the day, not when they're working.
There's a lot of work being done.
I think people can be pleasantly impressed and surprised when you walk in.
Yeah, it looks very different, looks nice.
Yeah, it's much more community, family-friendly atmosphere that we've tried to create in there.
Casual.
But, yeah, the back of the building, still the kitchen is, you know, a lot of work that needs to be done in there, so, I feel June, she always wishes for the earlier days.
She wants more money quick.
That's a mouse's aid.
Yeah.
The honesty of the eight-year-old.
That's right, that's perfect.
Yeah, that was great.
That was perfect.
Do you know anything about the town of West Boylston?
Um, I know some, I mean, I grew up in Holden, so I'm familiar with the area.
Great.
Um, you know, we know some people that work, work in town, just like, it's, seems like a small, I was looking at the sign outside, small town, big heart.
Yeah.
So that's what it feels like.
Small business is very important to this town, and we're very glad to have new businesses come in and, you know, try new things, so you've got your work ahead of you, but we're glad you're working on it and getting it done, and I have looked into the building a couple of times, and very, very nice work being done, it's really upgraded for the look of it, so...
And we see a lot of potential there, and I think, I think the townspeople will be very pleased with what we got going on once we get it open. We have, there's ambitions of outdoor dining there as well, I'm not sure, we're still working with the property owner, I'm sure you guys know Mr. Yell, we've agreed to do it, but I'm not sure exactly what we're doing, just got to put a, a deck off that front portion there.
Yep.
So a nice warm weather, you can have outside dining and whatnot, so that'll be a nice attraction for us, so...
Yeah.
We see a ton, a lot of potential there to make. Put the town in.
And you've been working with the building inspector, and things are going well?
So far, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Are you going to work in the store? What's your name?
Nicholas.
Huh?
Nicholas.
Nicholas, are you going to work in the store to make money?
I already have money.
Already you have money?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
His brothers work good enough, right?
Yeah, this guy, he was in a car, a bucket on the floor, we call it, when we opened the first one.
Eight years old, we opened it, yeah, eight years ago.
None of them, that's why I...
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Any questions from public?
Want to see the close-up applicating?
Sticker.
All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved.
Motion to grant the license.
Is my question?
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And they're also looking for a common vic license and an entertainment license, we wanted...
You want to do that, okay, so make a motion to include, well, you need a separate motion.
Separate motion.
Okay, make a separate motion to include those two licenses also.
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. Welcome to town.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is to refer the petitioned zoning bylaw article to the planning board for public hearing. So do we need a motion to do that, or how does...
Yes, please.
So we have to, it's petition bylaw, so we have to send it to, for a public hearing, so do we have a motion on that?
What bylaw?
The bylaw to overturn marijuana establishments in town.
So even though this new thing came out saying it's, you can't overturn it, we're still going to do it?
We can both not to.
Yeah, this is, you know, as far as I know, you know, this is a ten taxpayer petition. They did submit it to the town, the Board of Selectment, you know, we are going to put it on the town warrant, so, so this, this, since this is a zoning bylaw, it has to be referred to the planning board. Doesn't matter what it is, what's the...
But the question is, we received an, we received an email that says the Attorney General's Office overturned a similar article to this, do you remember what town it was, Nancy?
I don't remember, but my understanding is that you are required to put any petitioned article on, and, and what we will do at town meeting is just let the public know that. We will have town council get up and make the statement that, you know, this, this happened, and the vote goes as the vote goes.
So we'll make a motion to put it on for the, for the public meeting?
We have to just, just refer to the planning board.
Refer to the planning board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Recognize the acceptance of donations made to the library between June 27, 2018, and March 19, 2019, in the amount of $2,473.40 from payments for lost or damaged books and other materials, donations for the use of the printers, copier, and fax machines, memorial gifts, and other donations given to support the general needs of the library, and approve expenditure of these funds for general purposes.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, opposed, motion carries. Consider requests for two interdepartmental transfers from the Department of Public Works.
Yeah, I put in for two interdepartmental transfers, both coming out of the wage line item, one for purchase services, DPW purchase services, and the other for supplies. In my, in my notes, both of the line items that these are going into are less than 1% remaining for the rest of fiscal year. It's important, I don't know if you have this paper in, in front of you, but actually what we use these monies for, for the DPW supplies, with the season is over, there are many road repairs and property repairs that must be completed. This includes, but is not limited to, personal property damage that has been done over the plowing seasons, such as lawn and mailbox repair or replacement. So entailed in that would be the purchases of, obviously, the posts, the boxes, loom, seed, and any other damages that were incurred, and that's the bigger part of it. So there's, like I said, less than 1% in that line item, so the operating cost for, for supplies, also that we'll need for road repair, very limited, so, I was talking to Nancy about it today, we're just, the money's just not there to do that. And the other one is for purchase services, additional monies will be needed for the remainder of the current fiscal for items such as employee licensing, building utilities, membership fees, and uniforms. Also, there's currently less than 1% left from the originally budgeted amount for this current fiscal. I'm sure everybody can see that the prices of fuels, we do have a separate item for fuels, but I think we're in pretty good shape for that, for that, at this point. So those are the only things we're looking for now, and without any additional unforeseen circumstances, hopefully that'll get us through this fiscal.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, if you were, sir, I'm sorry, before, before I state that, because I don't know if you have the balances, what's left in, in wages, excuse me?
In, in wages is 150, 545, 25?
But after the warrant that's going through today, we'll have a balance of 141, 463, and after these two, after the remaining seven payroll warrants go through, it'll leave us barring no emergencies, 22,000.
Free cash.
But I never, you know, you don't jump up with Alphabell Joy, we're only in April. We never know what could happen, so...
If Chris was here, he'd tell you there'd be no more snowstorm, so you don't need it for, for that.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, he'd tell you that in May, though. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on these? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Chen, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, you have a plan for the road starings?
I, I do, in fact. Um, I have been reading your pavement management system report, um, that was finalized and published in January 2018. And what this, what this report said, and I haven't had a chance to talk about this, but as the road network sets now to, to bring it up to snuff, your transportation system roadway would cost the town in a Band-Aid fix approximately $600,000 a year, that's for a five-year program. If you wanted to go full bore, it would be obviously over a million. Now, um, when this report was done, and, and I, um, I like to myself follow the judgment of myself and the department, and those comments I get from, obviously, you folks and the, and the general motor in public, how, as we answer complaints and get the view. What they did here was also, um, this report, CMRPC, is they had, um, a person drive a car for, um, just for a ride of the roadway to get the feel of it, and somebody taking notes as they drove down the road to see what they thought. Um, obviously, it's, it needs to be a little more, a lot of information in this report, very helpful. I just don't think it, it covers everything that needs to be done. So, what I have, um, put together with the balance in my, um, my Mast dot ledger shows that right now we have available funds of $185,670 out of chapter 90. Understandably, by town meeting, you'll have an additional roughly $260,000 to add to that. So, what I'm looking at is, for repairs, at this current year's bid price, that'll run out June 30, um, would be, um, Hartwell Street Upper, which is, um, roughly, uh, $22,000. And again, please, these are Band-Aids. This is not how I personally choose to fix a road. Um, Hosmer Street, um, all terrible condition, um, is 51,280, and Temple Street is 70,847. And, um, also Keys, which is 26, 26,000, which would put us over what we have left in the ledger. So, the balances of the three first ones that I read you are roughly, roughly $181,000. But again, that's an overlay. That's a Band-Aid. Even this report here says some of them are in need of, of, um, full rehabilitation. And the way I'd like to build a road and see a road built is so it will last and do a full-depth reclamation. Any culvert pipes that have to be replaced, full-depth reclaim, 12-inch reclaim. That material is put back into the subsurface for base, graded with the proper crown and slope, um, compacted, and then, um, two inches of base coat and an inch and a half on top of it. That will more than double the prices that I just read to you, because this is only for an inch and a half of, um, bituminous concrete. It's only an overlay. Other things in this report show such things as crack, uh, crack sealing as a preventative maintenance measure, which is an excellent one, but you gotta move on it quickly, and you, you already have your own crack sealer. Excellent investment. I, I applaud for whenever they got that, but that is certainly a good thing to have. Generally, um, generally speaking, you have to go out to bid, or use, uh, chapter 90 funds for crack sealing or catch basin cleaner, restore structure repair. So, these are the projects that I would like to see done and get started on prior to the beginning of next fiscal. Um, I talked to Nancy today. I don't know really who the, um, authorized signatory is for chapter 90 projects. I would like to fill out the project requests and submit them to the board if the DPW is the authorized signatory. I never, uh, start a chapter 90 project without bringing it to the board, obviously, for Nancy. Um, but those are the projects that I recommend that we do, um, as quickly as possible, this, beginning of this construction season, so we can save some money on the next bidding process. So, you know, there are things, um, in your bid process, excuse me, that, um, were not bid, such as full-depth reclamation. And that's, believe it or not, a lot, um, a lot cheaper than doing a coalplain milling. And, and I'd just like to put that material back into the ground. Um, but I'm fairly confident that I can get that done at the price that I had it bid it, in, bid in other places. If you choose to just to do this overlay, understood, and so be it. Um, and the, the fourth project here, what I'd like to do is Keys first for the 26K, which again, would more than double that price, and then save Temple when we get the, until we get the new allotment come town meeting.
What part of Temple Street are you talking about?
Temple is, it's 4,500 feet, so that's, um, that's almost a mile of Temple Street on the other side.
So, it's on the West Boylston line, you think?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I guess what you're saying is, you'd rather, is it better doing two, two streets correctly than four, just overlaying? Is that what you're saying?
To me, it is, yes. Because it's a permanent fix, and as long as the preventive maintenance stands true for the life of that blacktop in a community like this, or any community other than a highway, where you'd, you'd get 20 years out of it.
So, isn't 140 state road? So, why would we pave it?
We wouldn't do a, no, we would not do a state road. Now, I, um, don't believe 140.
Isn't Temple Street?
Temple Street is...
140, right?
I don't believe all of it is 140. Doesn't that merge into 140?
I thought, I thought the whole, I thought it was 140.
Let me double check. Let me double check, because certainly you can't. They wouldn't allow you to do a state road with chapter 90 funds anyway.
I thought, I, I thought, I always thought it was, and maybe I'm wrong.
I did too. And I thought, I mean, that was just recently done.
No, Temple Street is bad. Uh, near the Pine, Pineup.
That's Crescent Street.
Yeah. Temple Street is bad. The roads are very bad.
What part of Temple Street are you talking to?
Part of the mall, yeah. The other, the other side, closest to the other side of the, of the border.
This side.
I'd like to find out if that's, I, I, I'm not for sure that it was a state road.
I'll find it out. I mean, obviously, it's a, it's a, it's a numbered route, but that doesn't necessarily mean it, but I will certainly check that. Um, they wouldn't allow you to do a state road with...
Yeah. I, I thought we, we plowed it, but I didn't think we, uh, had, do you know anything about that, Nancy?
If we, if we plowed, it's not a state road.
But if it's on the pavement management plan, then...
It is.
Well, then it's our street. We wouldn't have put something on the plan that's not one of our streets.
Right. But if the question is there, I'm, I'll, I'll check that, Mr. Hallow. If the question is there, I'll, I'll make sure that I, before I fill out the project request.
And if you could give us more detail exactly what part that you're doing?
I'll look at that, sure.
That would be helpful.
I mean, I, I like Kerry's idea of doing, doing two roads right.
Doing it right, yeah.
Instead of four roads, just putting a Band-Aid on it, because you're gonna be doing it again in three years, or four years, or five years, something like that, and that's just...
That's my question. What's the difference in life for doing an overlay versus doing it right?
Doing it right, to me, is a 20-year roadway, as long as the preventative...
And if we put a Band-Aid on it?
An overlay, three to five.
So, then it's, it's a no-brainer.
You're paving over, you're putting an inch and a half of bitcong on top of, of fractures. Um, where water's gonna come out, and you'll see the same cracks come up in the new overlay.
I'll give you a perfect example, is, uh, 190 northbound. Who driving that road?
No, thanks.
They, they overlay that instead of doing it right.
The transverse cracking, and you'll see the, the, the blacktop start to the laminate once the water gets in there and freezes in the winter, it pops up and it, it goes up to the upper level.
I do have one more question. Nancy, we did talk about Lee Street. Lee Street, up, upper Lee Street.
The puddle?
Yeah.
That's another project that we're doing with, um, we had that meeting with John Hoyt. That was the Lee Street drainage.
Oh, okay. That's a whole different thing.
That's a whole different thing.
Okay.
He's, he's working on prices.
That place is getting worse and worse.
So, why don't we, this isn't on our agenda for tonight?
Correct.
So, why don't we, Ed, you know, I know, he's here, we're asking the questions, but before we get too far afield from the agenda, why don't we put this on an agenda to get a full update on, um, I don't know what next, what two weeks looks like, but, uh, probably very full.
It's, it's, we'll squeeze it in.
Yeah, but at least I can get, I'll get the exact measurements, I'll be able to fill out the project. It'll be an official agenda item. Um, so you can, um, I, I guess, just approve for me to move forward with it, but I wanna make sure you're fully aware of the project and what, and what we're looking at.
I mean, do we, uh, I know, again, not on the agenda, but I, I, my feeling is, we're gonna get prices, let's do it right and not put a Band-Aid on it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So, if you could, if you could have the prices on doing it the right way?
Yep.
When you come back?
Sure, certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say in public, you guys did a great job installing that sign, the gateway sign. It looks great. Everybody, we had a lot of great comments about it, so thank you so much.
No, no, you're very welcome. Uh, the crew and I met out there several times to make sure we had the right view coming into town, and, uh, very happy with it. Um, also, I'm sure you know, and not that it's, uh, nothing that matters in that regard, but many, so many others that the crew was working in here. And, um, it, it really, um, pulled together as a team, and, and I'm really very appreciative that they're as knowledgeable and, um, and willing to work with me as they have been. So...
I'll also kudos to you, because you haven't been here this long, and you're really taking charge and getting some things done, so thank you.
Well, no, we all do, we all do it together. Thank you very much, but, uh, we all do it together. Mistakes will be made, um, certainly.
Well, you may.
We make more than any, 'cause I have any opportunity to. Uh, but I continue to, um, to learn by, from them, and, uh, the crew's been very helpful to me, all of them involved. So, hopefully, we'll just keep moving forward, and, and things will be good. And they are good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kerry. Okay, back to the second public hearing. Raj?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of, Board of Selectment of the town of West Boylston will hold a public hearing on the application for a wine and malt beverage pouring license for NOLA Cajun Chicken LLC Kitchen, I'm sorry, LLC DBA NOLA Cajun Kitchen, 340 West Boylston Street. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019, at 7:30 PM in the Selectment's Meeting Room 210, off the Town Hall 140, Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. All interested persons, groups, and agencies are invited to attend.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Robert Nguyen. I'm the, uh, manager for the OFC, and this is, uh, Jay, the, uh, Jank, uh, from, uh, owner of the OFC, uh, my bike partners. So, we're here to seek in the, uh, for the BNY license, uh, for NOLA. Uh, so I've been talking to George, the, uh, building inspector, and the police chief, and Nancy, and come up with a plan, how we do it. And we hired an architect to design the way that the, the city, everybody wanted, the way it's supposed to be. Uh, so we have that done. Uh, so we are here seeking, uh, permission to do it.
So, business is going well?
Yes, uh, we've been, uh, very supportive from the community, you know, um, and, and that's what we like the most. You know, we, we only open till nine o'clock on weekdays, and then 10 o'clock on Sunday, you know, so a lot of our local ask, you know, oh, we want, uh, a glass of wine, beer, you know, when we eat. And the place is so small, and we talk about the patio.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, so because of that, you know, we want to involve more, you know, expand more to give it to the community. And not only that, you know, we find that the parents are bringing their children in also, and they really like the gator for some unknown reason. I wasn't quite sure when I did gator, you know, just like I tell you, when I first got here, is that I wasn't sure if, uh, the community, uh, receptive to the case and concept. But now I kind of find out that they really enjoy, uh, what we have, you know, and, you know, the product that we, we serve. And the last time, we're saying that, you know, we, we trying to use, uh, our wine from the community, and, you know, and we, we did. You know, West Boylston is one of major supplier of seafood, you know, so it, it worked well for both, you know. We supporting, uh, the community, and they support us, and I think that's the only way that, uh, that, uh, we're gonna grow.
So, this is granted, you're gonna keep the same hours?
Same hours, you know. We're not gonna expand, because, you know, it's, it's, we're not, we wanted to have it, you know, so it's, that's why we don't want a liquor license, you know. We're not a place for people to go there to get drunk.
Yeah.
We just want them to have a beer or a glass of wine while they eat, and that's it, you know.
Okay. So, if I'm looking at the building, where do you, where are you proposing the patio?
Um, the existing, they had the existing, uh, six tie-down patio already. So, you know, so if you're looking at the restaurant on the right-hand side, that's where the existing is. So, now, we're gonna, uh, open the, uh, the door from the inside.
Okay.
And then we're gonna fence around it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you know, so...
You've gotten very good reviews on the West Boylston Connect site.
Thank you so much.
Did you bring menus with you? 'Cause I keep saying I have to stop.
Yes, I have, I have, I have, I have a whole box in my truck.
I need one. Do you have the website done yet? 'Cause I've checked a few times.
No, no, we're working on it.
You're working on it, okay.
I want to have one copy today.
I have, I have, I'll bring it up some. I have some in my car.
I got one from Happy Cleaners.
Oh.
So, the only concern I have is cars pulling right here. Are you gonna put some kind of barrier?
Yes, the police chief talked to me about that, and, uh, we're gonna put the, uh, the barrier, you know, around.
So, like a, uh, like a cement pole, something like that?
Yeah, he said either the cement pole, you know, you know, or the, uh, the parking block around it, you know, or a pole, and then with the chain. So, we went over that with the, uh, the...
Yeah, that's the only concern I have, is someone pulls it a lot and can't stop.
Which side are you attacking? Which side? Which side?
So, if you're facing the restaurant, the right-hand side, that's where the patio is?
Yes, that's where people, like I was telling the chief, that people are not going to the stop sign. They use my parking lot.
Yeah.
Like today, when I go out, I, they almost hit me, because they just go right through my parking lot, you know. And I asked the, uh, the chief, is anything that he can do for us, because it's, it's become, it's become real bad, because for me, when I come out, I know, so I watch when I get out the restaurant, but a lot of my customer, you know, they don't know that, and these people just go, like, fly right through.
So, are you gonna put, try to put like a fence on the right-hand side, along, along the Nelly?
Yes, it's, it's gonna be a fence around, the whole fence around.
And then in the front, you know, there's a kind of barrier?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I'm concerned about. So, something that a car can't drive through.
Yes, we both, trust me, we both concerned about that, you know.
Also, I did notice on the other day, you know, they are, uh, parking on the left-hand side towards the plaza.
Yes, so...
People are taking, you know, cars are parked like this, and the people are taking on the back for...
So, now the parking is gonna be front, front, and then side, 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 and then the back also.
I think we may have to do something with the parking.
Yes.
There are, a lot of cars comes and goes, but, uh, people are taking on the side, this side, that side, yeah. So, you'll have problems.
Yes.
I believe the, he owns the park, some of the back parking lot, so there is room to park there, but, but, yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Anything from the public?
Want to close the public hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to grant the, uh, those BNY license as, as asked for.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
We're glad it's going well. Keep it up.
Those, those licenses are, that's not in here?
Excuse me?
Do we, we don't have to sign?
Not yet.
Okay.
Does it get from the ABC?
Oh, it's gotta go through the ABCC, and then we sign that.
No, but you're gonna sign a cover sheet. No, yeah, the ABCC gets it next.
Okay, old business. Request from Tracy and Paul Weldon, 176 Pier Street, reconsideration of sewer abatement request. Wanna give the spiel?
Um, you had, um, reviewed this request about a month ago, um, and denied it based on your, um, request for sewer abatements and your, um, policy on, um, second meters. This person, um, put in a new lawn, um, they showed all the receipts, um, and they, I've been told, when she got her, um, abatement that said it was denied, she gave a call to Kerry, and she would like the board to reconsider it, because she said she went to see Butch, or call Butch, and asked, and told him all the water was outside use, and he said to her that if she had all of her receipts, he would bring it to the board, but he had no, he did not know if the board would approve it. He didn't tell her that he would, um, that the board would approve it, but he said he would bring it forward to the board. But she went to Butch, I spoke with Butch today, after she had already done this. It wasn't before she put the lawn in. She put the lawn in, she watered the lawn, she got her sewer bill and said, "I have all my receipts," and that's when he said he would put the abatement forward and tell the board, "You have your receipts," and water was not used, um, didn't flow through the system. Um, and she would like that to be reconsidered.
Nancy, Butch did acknowledge that he did say, had a conversation with her.
He had a conversation with her, but he did not give her any guarantee that the board would do this, and this was after. She didn't ask him before. She asked him after she did the watering.
And that was my big question, was, did this happen, did she call Butch and say, "I wanna put in the lawn"? He said, "Yeah, go ahead, and we'll abate the bill after you do the watering," or did she say, "Oh, my God, look at this bill," and then went and saw Butch, and it was the latter?
Mm-hmm.
So, do we have any motion? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to, um, the FISB update, general update on the senior center.
It is, uh, done, doing some minor, uh, touch-ups in interior in, uh, the building. It's pretty much done. It's came out good, and hopefully, uh, they're moving in sometime It's came out good and hopefully, uh, they're moving in sometime in April?
Next week.
Yeah.
Way in this next week.
Yeah. But then the, uh, grand opening is going to be, let me see, May fourth at eleven? Is that what it is?
What about Saturdays?
What about Saturdays, yeah?
May fourth, I think.
May fourth, yeah.
It'll be in Ireland.
We'll be talking about the other next meeting.
Can I have a, do I have a question though? Um, did the computers and everything get all straightened out and?
The cable, you mean?
Cable, right. So it's been installed and?
They're doing the last part of it tomorrow.
Correct. Okay, good.
There was a phone system issue too, right? That's all?
Yeah, that's all.
So that's all set?
Everybody's been rectified.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, town administrator report, Nancy, you're up.
Okay, first thing is your grant report. Um, here's, um, there's a report from all the different departments on the grants that they applied for and they received and what the grants were for, school department, the library, um, and I also reached out to our grant writers, um, and Theo said he has not had anyone email him about any grants in close to a year and I sent out three emails to Carrie Suda and I never got a response on any of them. So, um, that's where we stand with the grant report. As far as town council, through February twenty-eighth, we have expended fifty point sixty-four percent of our eighty thousand dollar budget. The, um, Brasi versus the ZBA, the court set a new trial date and that's now June twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, um, and they have a pre-trial conference on June seventeenth. Um, snow and ice, we, um, we just got another bill, so we are now at two thirty, two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one and ten cents. And that was my latest number from the accountant's office.
And is that was one hundred and sixty-five originally? Is that what it was?
I believe it was because we increased it last year and there was, yes.
Is the two thirteen the spent amount or the overspent?
Overspent.
That's what I thought, yeah. So that's where it's on top of the original budget. We spent that.
Um, our treasurer collector, Bonnie Yazek, has, um, notified the town that she's going to be retiring in June. I met with her and has sat down with the town accountant so we could put a timeline together. Um, we did the in-house posting this week on Friday. I'm going to send the ad into the Beacon. We're also going to, um, advertise it on the Collector Association website and, um, there's a timeline here and there's a proposed interview team. Um, and when we get to that point, I'd like one member of the Board of Selectmen on the interview team. Um, and hopefully the plan is to have someone in place for two weeks of training in June and then Bonnie's last day will be June twenty-eighth. And this morning I received notice that Betty, who's been working in the office, I think she's been working there for twenty-five years. She's been there a really long time. She, um, comes in every Tuesday, she works five hours, she does all the payables, she processes everything, she files everything away. She is going to retire along with Bonnie. She told Bonnie when she was leaving, she was going to leave, so.
It's not good.
Well, we posted that one in-house today and, um, we'll trudge along and we'll get the, we'll get the job done.
Nancy's going to have seven jobs by the time the year ends.
Nancy, uh, so Chairman, that just seems like, that's very aggressive if the treasurer collector, no later than June tenth, that seem, is that, um, are there a lot of jobs out there for that at this point?
I, I've been monitoring the MMA website.
Yeah.
And we've actually identified a couple of people that we're going to, um, invite to apply, so.
I'm just thinking by the time somebody gets interviewed and then somebody gives a notice, that's.
That's why, um, if you look at, yep, we don't, we're thinking that most people only have to give a two or three-week notice.
Ooh, I don't know about that.
But, um, we're hoping that once we notify the top applicant, that would be May ninth, um, get concurrence from the board, that's the fifteenth. And so that would give us three weeks, um, to get the person here, so.
I would think somebody on that level would give a month's notice, that's why I'm questioning. But if two and three is, you know, typical, that's fine. Just, we might need to have a backup.
And if we need a backup, I know that, um, Bonnie would agree to.
Okay, good.
Help us out. She's already said she would come in and help train if, if we get beyond July one.
Yeah.
She would help the town out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, the community survey now is closed. Um, there were a number of handwritten surveys, um, delivered to Town Hall at the end, so Norm is going to pick all those up. I actually counted thirty-four downstairs in the town clerk's office, so that was good. I'm hoping we at least hit four hundred and fifty, um, and we'll see. Um, then we'll tally up the results and, um, get a report ready for that. And that's all I have for my report tonight.
Nancy, on this snow and ice, uh, the two thirteen, that's obviously got to be filled from this year's budget. Does that affect anything at this point? You're still good?
We're good.
Well, do you know off the top of your head what you have budgeted for the end snow and ice figure in your calculations? If not, you can let me know later.
Okay.
That's a good help.
Well, I, that's a very drilled-down, specific question.
Can I ask one question? Nancy, I was at the CMRPC.
Mm-huh.
And there was a potential grant if our community is safe route to school.
I have that written down.
So it is, uh, you know, there is some money available. People, a lot of, uh, other towns and are using it, so we could get some money out of that. So, but before then, you know, we need to become a member of that, that list. Our town is not.
Correct.
So maybe you can.
I believe, was, was Butch working with the school superintendent on that before he retired?
I think it's, uh, yeah, it's DPW and, uh, I don't know who else is supposed to be.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll look into that.
So there is money available there and also with that, uh, complete state policy, we do get money. So if you use up this money, we can apply for it.
We, we are working on the, um, the complete streets, we're working on the sidewalks that are going from Pine Arden to the school. Um, we met with the engineer and then I called the school superintendent. I sent her the map so she would know what was going on and she hadn't seen it, so I invited her to come up and had the engineer come out on Monday and, um, she had another suggestion. The engineer was extremely accommodating and he's going to scale back a couple of